Yeah.
Okay. Can you leave it? Um, pass it? Okay. Now we can make sure she can share her screen. Well, we said can't dream about the link. I have this one muted.
So how are we gonna hear that?
She has to be... Yeah.
Can you hear me? Yep, and you're actually over the microphone on top. Uh, we just won't have a video on our side for you to see us. Uh, which I think is... Like I said, it's work around, we're like, okay, we tried to set up the owl, we tried to do, do the thing, we have our, our deal, but we record the, the meetings via YouTube, so it's kind of a little, uh, it was like, nope, you can't use that camera if you're using it for something else, you know, so.
Let's make sure she can share her screen.
Perfect, you got it.
Hello?
Like I said, I think it would be good just to do the, did you have a presentation to do that, that talking part on that, and then, uh, we can get questions kind of lined out afterwards, you know, whenever you're done. Or you'll have the floor, you know, you'll have the floor when we get going, so. Yeah, that's all. And we'll make sure your screen gets on there and then we'll get that going, so.
You didn't message Jerry.
What was that?
In my shirt.
No, no. Sorry, sorry, trust me. To take your picture.
Yeah, it's just that somebody was supposed to call me.
Yeah, that was.
Okay, so you're good, right?
One of those days, something's up here. Yeah, so we fully see your screen now on that phone. It's your, uh, it looks like your desktop and you're playing around with Teams right now. I think you're over, you're over in the corner. Uh, with a black screen behind you.
Want to get it?
Yeah, let's get it done.
Yes, come on.
You're here, I'm here.
Let's go reset, I know that I need tomorrow.
Yes, we do, Town and City of Planning Commission Training. Yep. Yeah, I think so, because I don't know what the presenter's view looks like, so. It just looks like a, like the, like the first slide of a, of a presentation and then it has you in the corner. Yep. On your side? You, you have a black background on what we see there, except now, now it does show you, uh, in there with the, on your slides up at the top, has you on there with a white background. Now it has you full screen. This is not sharing. Go grab some new batteries for the microphone real quick, that we can hear everybody clearer as well.
Oh my goodness. Good afternoon.
Good morning.
If I end that, that's early on.
Who are you? Who's there?
Are you?
Steve.
Hi.
Steve.
This is you.
Where should I sit?
The side. I was gonna say. Not yet.
So you should be able to hear us a lot better now with that microphone working. Beautiful.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, we see the full, the full slide, it has, uh, Town and City of Planning Commission Training, and then the municipal league logo along with your name and information at the bottom. And then it has black, black on the sides for the slide, so. To fill the full slide screen, so. Yeah, we have, I know I won't have two trustees here for sure, um, but we have, I think we'll have all of the commissioners though, so. It's gonna get noisy very quickly. Yes, we should have all our five, uh, commissioners and the two alternates should be here as well. Uh, two of my, uh, board of trustees. Yes, I went ahead and took advantage of it when we were doing a joint work session, so. Yes. There's not any handouts right now.
Don't be nervous, it's okay.
When we get the visitor center re, we look at, reserve some space, but I would like to see if we can have a local artist there. You know, just to showcase.
I think that would be ideal to do something like that, right?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, because, because it, it would be a native feature here and, and the artists would be, you know.
Because I could see us doing that, I could see us doing storytelling and book readings and book signings and everything like that. Kind of like how, uh, next week the monuments doing their deal for the, uh, book launch for Mary Daniel Saylor's book and doing that and all of that site. But if we could do something like that here with some of those, maybe even get like Buddy Ritter to redo a, a recapture of his, the book that he wrote, you know.
That's why I say it'd be nice if we could have book meetings or whatever, you know, have little things during the, because that's really wasted space.
Could be utilized so much better for our community.
Anyway, that was an idea. So did you look at the plaza?
What's that?
The, the, the brick.
Yeah, we, we've been out there several times through, since, since then.
It's easy when you're walking along, you don't notice that little, but on, on one side it's larger than the other side.
Right. Yeah, and I think in talking with, um, oh my gosh, I can't remember any. But it seemed like it was not on site on this side, I thought it was on the, on the left side. It was on the south side where the, the ramp part is. So, I mean, we, we have some, some tape orders and these will be here on Thursday. We'll get that down, but we're moving the pots and things like that around in that whole area just to create the visual that there's something.
There's something there.
Yeah.
Because I could, I mean, I, uh, I could see that happening.
On that side, yeah.
So Natalie, was it Bowser? Yeah.
I think that's, yeah, because she's, she's one of the ones that's talking with the group of people all the time, right?
Yeah, they do it every morning.
Since you worked at the university too, right?
She was a faculty.
I think that's who it was, yeah.
The trustees know. The trustees know.
Yeah, there's, I know, uh, Viviana and Adriana said that they wouldn't be there, so.
I know, I took them to, uh, San Antonio.
I'll stay anywhere until five.
Until five, yeah, so I'm sure she'll be a little late. Didn't say, and I think we have. Who's missing Eric?
No, he's over.
He's over here.
Yeah. He went with.
That's not it though, who else is missing?
From climbing the sun?
Yeah. How are you?
Good, good, how are you both?
Good, thank you. Oh, Alba. That's who, that's who's missing.
One missing?
Yeah. It's like, who's missing? Commissioner Alba, that's me.
Oh God, stand in line. How else can I say that? Good, good. What is it?
Yeah.
I left early. Yeah. Not too, I mean, five o'clock, not too early, but yeah.
No problem.
No, my, this is very, very extremely comforting. Yeah, I'm very, very, very blessed, yeah.
They know you're a trustee.
Oh, you're too kind. Oh, how are things with you? How's retirement?
Oh, it's grand. I just came back from, uh, Kiowa Wilderness, I was up there four days, everybody's in.
You're a friend.
We need to talk. You need someone to go. Yeah, I just got back, though. Is it, um, Friday?
Oh, good for you.
Yeah, so it's just nice to get out there to separate, you know, there's so much pressure down here. Even, you know, retired, there's still a lot of pressure. Getting out of here. Deep in the blessing.
Oh, yeah.
There's no noise up there, you, you don't have your phone.
Nothing, no.
No connection to the phone.
It's wonderful. You know, I know.
Go to your wife. They're a big company.
Yeah, I told you that when we had our travel trailer, oh my God.
Just get out.
Oh. We ended up selling it because we, we couldn't travel like we used to years ago. Miss it every day.
Well, you read great.
I used to. Then I have no motivation. Like this year.
All right, I think we have everybody here, I know we're missing a commissioner, and I know two, uh, trustees told me that they weren't gonna be able to make it to this, uh, work session, uh, but we'll go ahead and get everything kicked off, that way Rebecca can get going, so today, and I'll, I'll kick it off for you, Mr. Chair, if you're all right with that, just to help out, uh, so today's Monday, May nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty-five, the time is five oh three in the afternoon. Uh, we are here, uh, at the Mecia Town Hall for a joint, uh, work session between the board of trustees and the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, with a presentation from the New Mexico Municipal League, uh, pertaining to parliamentary procedure, uh, and Robert's Rules of Order, uh, to just help streamline everybody and get everybody on the same page, so. Uh, I will turn it over to Ms. Rebecca Martinez, uh, from the Municipal League, uh, who helps out, and she'll tell a little bit more about her, uh, position and all of that as well, give a little background, so with that, Ms. Martinez, you have the floor. Yes, we can.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Stop.
Okay.
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 There we go. Parliamentary Commissioner for Order of Trustees.
Yeah, well, we use, it's a modified Harley Pro and Roberts rules. And that's what, that's what we have adopted.
They did the same in their first meeting of the, of the year as well.
Yeah.
Spare batteries. Hi Rebecca, uh, sorry. Uh, my name is Eric Ayos, Commissioner with the Town MC. Um, so I always assumed that rolling quorum meant that, you know, you're hanging out at the same time, at the same place, talking about the same policy, but you're saying that a rolling quorum can be interpreted as, well, I talked to someone and then I talked to another person, I talked to another person. So it doesn't mean that you're, my, my thought was a rolling quorum, it's like if it looks inappropriate, it is inappropriate. Like if you're hanging out with two other commissioners, it doesn't look good, right? So there's a difference. Well, I, I'm just supposing, this is just something I'm coming up with, but I always, I always, my understanding is it's, rolling quorum is physical. Where you're just hanging out together, you know, having a beer and discussing policy, but rolling quorum really means that if you're having ongoing discussions with other people and you're coming to a consensus before the meeting, then that is a rolling quorum. Okay, thank you.
And I think just to clarify more on that, is it commissioners, if you have questions on specific agenda items, I would always recommend you go and speak to staff directly. The staff will answer those questions for you, or at least get you in the right direction and then provide you information to, for you to do the research as well. Uh, that way you're not reaching out to another uh, member of the board, potentially making that rolling quorum happen unintentionally, have, making that happen.
Rebecca, real quick, I'm sorry. Are you going to mention too, the consequences of violating the Open Meetings Act? And, I'm sorry, and also individually as well, the consequences? Okay. Yes.
Rebecca, just because the commission does have a regular meeting that does start here fairly quickly.
Rebecca, just because the Commission does have a regular meeting that does start here fairly quickly. And then we can go, because the meeting does start once the work session is complete. And that's the way that it's shown on the agenda. But if we could just move along a little bit, I guess. That's up to Mr. Chair on that one.
I do have a question based on the recent discussion.
But I would say maybe about 10, 10 minutes, 15 minutes more. Maybe 10, 10 minutes with five, five minutes of generalized Q and A from, from everybody. That may have, have questions in general, whether they applied what's been talked about or, or not. No, of course, there's tons of questions, so here we go.
Hi Rebecca, sorry, this is trustee Johnson-Burick again. When you were discussing ex parte communications, can you touch on the importance of, especially when there's going to be a public hearing? Or even for a Board of Adjustments? The importance of not having conversations with the applicants?
Thank you.
Other questions, Commissioners? Mr. Chair, you had a question earlier?
Yeah, I had a question.
Yeah, this is Eric Walkincham, the Chair for the P and Z, Planning and Zoning. Can you hear me? Okay. And I, I did have a question when you were talking about when the public can get up and speak on any agenda item. The way we have it set up, it's not individual items. It's just we invite them to come to talk on any of the items. And so, you know, it kind of, it kind of implied that the public, we can introduce the public on each item. And that take a long time, I think. Right. 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 Yeah. Right. Okay, good, thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Miller, Commissioner. I have a question on the rolling quorum. Because Masiya is such a small town. You know, I have a big Christmas Eve open house. Is it inappropriate to invite members of the Board of Trustees to swing by? With the clear understanding this is a celebratory, a Fourth of July, anything like that? We're leaving for a training tomorrow. Would it be inappropriate for three of us to go in the same car? Knowing we're going to be doing town business? Is that more an appearance of impropriety? That's my question.
Yes, ma'am.
On Friday, yeah.
And then from there, it's about a little over two hours to drive.
I'll tell you guys.
All right. Oh, okay. Oh.
Okay.
I have a presentation.
Break the news.
I want to be there.
Good, I found some water.
No, I want to hang out and listen to the presentation. Yeah.
Hold on, hold on. Is that? Typically, we've done it during roll call, but I mean, you can ask her that way it's in the record, you know?
All right. We are. Meeting of the Planning and Zoning and Sort of Government Committee is in order. It's in order, and it's a regular meeting. City Hall. It's Monday, the 19th, and the time is six seventeen.
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So it is time, Mr. Salazar, if you will do a roll call for determination of quorum.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Present.
Commissioner Miller?
Present.
Chair Walkinshaw?
Present.
Vice Chair Alba? Commissioner Mulvihill?
Present.
Commissioner Paz?
Present.
And Commissioner Ovilar?
Present.
Mister Chair, we do have four out of the five seats present.
Okay. This time, I'd like to invite alternate Commissioner Ovilar, right? Is that correct? To join us close enough. Thank you. All right, the next order of business is if there's any changes or we need approaches, changes or approval to the agenda. If any commissioner wants to be recognized for any changes. Doesn't look like it. So.
Mister Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right. So it was approved by Commissioner Miller, and seconded by Commissioner Mulvihill.
All right. No discussion, I'll go ahead and take the vote, Commissioner Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulvihill?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovilar?
Yes.
And Mister Chair?
Yes.
Walkinshaw? Yes. Mister Chair, motion passes five zero.
Thank you. And it's time for, if there's any public input on any of the agenda items, this would be the time to get up, state your name, address, and your comment. Yes, yeah, come on up.
Questions about what we had submitted?
If you could come up and state your name and address for the record. Oh, that's okay.
Paul Carodi. We live here in Masia, we have a property on Calle de San Albino. We were just told to be here to see if you guys for vote, had any questions about the design plans we had.
Well, I appreciate that, I think the questions will come once we get to that item.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming too. We appreciate that. So. Now we're to the approval of the consent agenda, and there's only one item on that. And it's the May 5th, 2025 P and Z work session and public hearing and regular minutes for the regular meeting. Any commissioner want to comment on that?
Move to approve the May 5th, 2025 PZHAC work session, public hearing, and regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Very good. Okay, motion for Commissioner Gallegos, and then also seconded by Commissioner Mulvihill.
There's no discussion, I'll go ahead and take the vote, Commissioner Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mister Chair Walkinshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovilar?
Yes.
And Commissioner Mulvihill?
Yes.
Mister Chair, motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're getting into item six, which is the action and consideration. The first is, well, I think we need to have a motion, right? That we're going to address this first project, which is Business License 1380.
I may move to approve Business License 1380.
Second.
Move to discuss, correct? Yes, yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right.
So just to be correct, the first motion to approve was by Commissioner Mulvihill, and the second motion to approve was by Commissioner Miller?
Okay. Yes.
All right, so this is a business license, a number 1380. It is at 1730 Tierra de Misias Suite 6. It was submitted by Liz Wright, applying for a license to grow her already established business, Assembly Create LLC. Assembly Create LLC, a business dedicated to hands-on crafts and do yourself workshops for local communities. The zone is commercial, general commercials. Background analysis, Mrs. Wright is applying for business license to operate Assembly Create LLC in the town of Masia. Her business has been in operation since 2016, with the mission of bringing community together through creativity. Mrs. Wright will be offering workshops in weaving, embroidering, wood burning, resin art, and more. She aims for Assembly to be a community gathering, a community gathering spot, a neutral, welcoming space outside of home or work where people can connect, unwind, and share creativity. She hopes to collaborate with and hire local makers as teaching artists, inviting them to share their skills and develop new workshops that reflect their unique voices and talents. I stand by, in the application, you will see a business plan, the proof of ID, the space that's being rented, the property and parking availability, and the lease agreement from the landlord tenant. And I stand by for any questions.
Is Liz Wright here? Doesn't look like it, okay. So any, it's open for discussion?
I have no questions.
Be recognized. I do have, I was looking through the packet, and, you know, obviously I noticed wood burning, resin art, and what have you. So has the fire department looked at this and?
They do, they do the inspections on every business that, especially the brick and mortar. All the businesses, yeah, they will be looking at.
About it happened, okay. That's all I had.
All right, so ready, we'll take the vote?
Yes.
Mister Chair, all right. Commissioner Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mister Chair Walkinshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovilar?
Yes.
And Commissioner Mulvihill?
Yes.
Mister Chair, motion passes five zero.
Thank you. The next project is B, it's a P and Z case 06211001, and that's at 2832 Amita Street, submitted by Natalie Solapek. Solapek requesting approval to install a 10 by 10 metal carport on her property. This is zoned HR, and I believe it's in Masia Farms, is that correct? And, yeah, that's motion.
Move to discuss PZHAC.
Second. Second.
All right, first motion by Commissioner Gallegos, second motion by Commissioner Miller. I'm sorry, Mulvihill, Mulvihill. All right, this is, as Mister Chair was mentioning, this is a request to build a 10 by 10 metal carport. This is, if you look at your packet, you'll see it's going to be built towards the back of the property. Recently, that driveway, the metal, the metal, the concrete driveway was poor not too long ago, the board did approve that. Basically, the whole purpose for this metal carport is, for one, is metal, so to be able to get it as close as up to three feet through the property line. And two is to be able to shade the vehicle from the homeowner because of the excessive heat that's coming soon. Ms. Solapek would like a carport on her driveway to keep her vehicle out of the sun. She was recently approved to pour driveway on her house. The carport will be made out of metal with PBR, a steel panel metal on the roof. The color will be similar to the house to keep the aesthetics. The panel will be located towards the end of the driveway, three feet from the property line. Will be anchored down to the cement driveway with anchor bolts. She will be constructing the carport herself, not herself particularly, but she's not going to be contacting family members or friends or anything like that, considered to be self. The packet, again, it does have a site plan, aerial pictures, drawings, metal type, the type of metal, what is the PBR? Actually, I haven't looked that one up. Proof of ownership, identification, and driveway pictures. And I stand by for any questions.
Yes ma'am.
As far as the HOA over there, did they already approve?
Yeah, they did mention, they talked to the applicant, she did mention that she did go talk to the HOA, and the HOA pretty much stated that as long as Masia is able to approve of all the regulations, that there should be okay.
Good, yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead and take the vote?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mister Chair Walkinshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Ovilar?
Yes.
And Commissioner Mulvihill?
Yes.
Mister Chair, motion passes five zero.
Okay, very good. Now we're to P and Z case 062002, which is at 2842 Calle de San Albino, submitted by Paul
Carodi.
Carodi. Carodi, thank you. Requesting construction of an adobe wall in front of their property, and also a porch in the front, and also a porch in the back. And it's zoned HR. And also, it's important to note that it is, it's on our historic register, that particular building, structure. And I don't know if it's historic, historically it's not historically significant, but it's contributing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. So, motion to?
I move, I move to discuss case PZHAC 062002.
Second. All right.
Okay, so move to approve by Commissioner Mulvihill, and seconded by Commissioner Gallegos. As Mister Chair, you mentioned, you know, this is an application for various things. One is the wall, and two is, two porches, a porch in the front and a porch in the back. The wall that's being constructed is, at this time, it is going to be adobe. There's a possibility it could be center block, but it will be plastered regardless to match the color of the house and the texture of the house, the style. The porch in the back, I don't foresee any issues with that. The design standard to that meets a lot of the designs within the community. The house, if you notice, is set towards the front of the property. The fence that's being requested or proposed, it's not going to go across the house. It's in itself, is actually on the side of the house, but it's on the front property line.
Right.
Okay. I believe I did mention on here that the wall is going to be six foot high with some gates. If you see, if you look at the pictures, the drawings, there are a wooden gate, and also some window type. I tried to read, anybody know what those are called that are, I know there's a name for them, I just couldn't find it. There's actually a name for those little windows that are in the wall, for perimeter walls, I couldn't remember. Either way, they are going to have windows, just like the picture states right there. The wall is going to be set back six feet, and I'd like to kind of point something out. The reason why it's six feet is probably going to be an error in my part. After talking to Mister Chair and myself doing some research, I'm like, why would it be six feet and not the seven feet that's required? And believe because it's six foot tall, I might have gotten confused to the point where it says six foot back. But in reality, the setback of anywhere around the property is seven feet. So if the applicant is okay with that, I'd like to proceed with. I thought you were saying this over there. So it's seven feet. The reason, again, one of the reasons why it has to be seven feet is because another question I wanted to ask the commission is, our code regulates your front wall because normally your front wall crosses the front of your house, right? It crosses the front of your house, so it only allows it to be up to five feet, and it has to have 40% visual of the walls, got to be able to see through, right? That's where a code says, and that's one of the things I mentioned to the applicant, so he was okay with moving it back. Again, I thought I was, I thought I had said seven feet, but it actually said. But looking at the intent of the code again, the reason why that is, is because whenever there's first responders, or there's, when it comes to safety or anything like that, or even like a corner lot, it's supposed to be only so high, 30 feet this way, 30 feet this way, because of those certain situations. But this wall does not cross the front of the house. So does that, with that in mind, does this still require to be seen seven feet back because it wants to be six feet? Even though I look at it, when I look at the property, it looks almost like the backyard, right? Because it's on the side of the house, it's not going through the front, as a normal property would have. So anyway, keeping that in mind, that is one of the reasons why I stated it needed to be seven feet back. But if the applicant wants to put it on the property line, I guess that could be open for discussion to see what the commission feels about that.
So there any questions?
I have a question.
Yes ma'am.
So if he's going to go on the property line, does he have to get permission from the other, from the property owner on the other side?
I'm sorry, you say that one more time?
If he's going to do it on the property line, does he need to get permission from? If he's going to do it on the property line, does he need to get permission from the other property owner?
No, no, no. The reason, one time you would need a right of entry form, what it's called, is whenever the, there's two property, private properties on each side of that wall.
It's on a road, yeah.
Correct.
Front of the road. I, I did have a a few questions. My understanding was the six feet that you have in your, your packet, that's because it was going to attach to the corner, the southeast corner of your prop, of the building, correct?
Wall is going to be set back.
We need to get it from record.
This wall is actually a sidewall, it attaches to the side of the house and it's going north and south.
Right.
So it is going to be from the property, the front property line, which is east property line, which is the street of San Albino. It's probably at least ten feet away from that.
Right.
So it's not, it's not at the corner of the house, it's set back further within the house.
Oh.
So it goes back deeper into our property. So there's no question.
That's why I was a little bit confused because on the, if you read the packet, I saw you were, you wanted to attach it to that corner of the house, which, which probably be okay, I mean, but you're saying it's for, it's going to be further back.
Further back on that wall.
So it's not on the property line and it's far enough away, okay.
We are talking about the wall though, correct?
Yes, yes.
Because the front porch is the one that is, it's right on the edge.
I know.
It's, it's our front sidewalk, which our property line's the end of the sidewalk. We just want to get some shade on that sidewalk that's on the front of that house.
And we're getting that one, we're getting to that one.
Yeah.
We're going to finish that. So you, you do want to have the wall
Set back.
Set back, okay. Just want to make sure that I didn't say something that you needed. In reality, you didn't have to.
Another thing too, is that we've got a stain there, it's being constructed out of the building and we're not sure if we can find an adobe layer or adobe bricks, but we, we definitely are going to make it stuccoed and look like adobe if it's not constructed from adobe.
Rather than, there's no intention to make it out of rock, correct?
No rock.
Okay.
It will be stuccoed with a tier of portal fences and it'll look like this sort of Masia.
Right, thank you. Any?
I'm fine with.
With the wall? Any other questions on the wall? No? Okay, so now, now we're going to talk about the porch. Now, if you look at the pictures, I didn't have a picture in here, I might have, just an aerial.
I've got one.
Oh, you got one? Maybe you're going to share that, Mr. Chair. So basically, the house sits very close to the front of the property line. Mr. Corodi wants to build, add a porch to that. I think the aesthetics of the house looks very plain in a sense and I think adding a porch to that will make it a little bit more appealing, curb appeal as you call it. The, the issue with that is, you know, again, going to the seven foot setback, right? There isn't seven foot setback required that every home in HR zone have. But also, the code also dictates that depending on the adjacent properties and their setback, whereas that the average setback could be taken from any of those surrounding buildings. Now, what do you call nearby, it could be, it just has to be the same block, it has to be the same zone. Again, that's why you are here for interpretation purposes. In the plaza area, there are some homes also that actually, there's a porch that goes over the walkway itself and, and covers it and gives the, you know, people walking through there some shade and whatnot to it through there. So again, and that, that's just a questionable request that I was, I'm stand by to ask any question, answer any questions or, or any comment.
And I realize that the setbacks requirements are, I don't know when they're actually done, it's in the code, when it, when it became in the code, but realize that this is a house that's been existing since nineteen thirty. So, I mean, it's fine, the setbacks are basically if you're going to have a new house and then you have the latitude to actually design your house so it meets those setbacks. And, but this, this case, it's totally different. And also realize that obviously we're in the, we're historical appropriating those committees. So I took a lot of pictures of, through, through town and like, like Mr. Salazar said, there's a lot of buildings in the historic district, historic buildings that have a, have a canopy over the, over their, you know, their porch. And it makes a lot of sense because it's really hot around here. So it's just kind of interesting that I looked into the code sixteen six, or eighteen sixty three hundred, or three hundred and twenty. And it does say down on D, it says uncovered patios, which would be below the floor level of the first floor should be, should, could approach two and a half feet into, into the front. Oh, no, I'm sorry, it says, I'll go ahead and read the whole thing, two and a half feet for the, for the side or the rear yards, but six feet into the required for the front yard. Well, the house is six feet from the property line, probably pretty close to that.
Right.
And I, I had taken some pictures and so it seems like the property's a little bit beyond your walkway.
Oh, you got a big, I was looking for.
Yeah. So.
That's right. So this is the front.
Yeah. Right. That's what I thought. So again, in the, in the proposal, in the drawing, you, you show the post would be at five feet out from the wall and, and then the So you have the room to actually do that based on where your property line is. I think the issue about the property line not approaching into the property line is you don't want those, that eve to stick out very far. Yeah, right. Right, right, right. Oh, yeah, yeah, I didn't understand that, but, okay, all right. That would be good. Build it into that, yeah. Because that rock wall is on town property. Yeah, and it's town property, I think, so, okay. Well, that makes sense to have some steps in there, so.
I, I have a couple of questions. Number one, is there a door? Because like his picture, I don't see a door.
Yeah, there is.
Okay, the doors for the entry. And then the other thing is, I, I still have kind of an issue with, with what the code says. It, it doesn't say anything about a house that was built in nineteen thirty versus a house that's built in two thousand twenty five.
Right.
So if the code is saying six, seven feet, then I, that's where I have an issue, is that it has to be seven feet, right?
That's, yeah, of course, that, that's one way to interpret it. And I think if we are going to make an exception, we got to be very, very careful and very clear on why we're, we're doing that. I think a, again, I, I do think that it does require the seven feet. It could be a possibility that the other route and the recommendation for him to be go through maybe a variance process to where maybe that way it can be, make that exception. But for our, as much as I think it would give it curb appeal and it would give it all this, I think that, again, we got to be careful with what the, within the requirements of the code. See, it, it's not, well, part of our code again also states that, you know, like I mentioned earlier, the setback is determined depending on the surrounding structures in the houses. And like I said, there are houses nearby that do have that car, that porch that extends to the property line as they're being proposed here. Those were exceptions that were already before the code was implemented.
Correct.
Grandfather, exactly. But our code says that you are allowed an average of, you know, the setbacks with nearby structures. So they have, if all of them are to the front, it gives you that exception already in this, in the code itself. Again, again, you know, some of it says seven feet, some of it says, again, I'll leave it all to the commission to, to, to make that determination.
Go ahead, yes.
I like to work with our people and if it's historically pleasing aesthetically, I think that's part of our job is to make, make it look good and be functional. And if we can wiggle our way through this by appealing to the adjacent structures, that's about I would like to take.
I'd like to make one more comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I agree with what Commissioner Miller is saying, but I think that it should go through the variance process instead of it just being that we vote on, I mean, that, you know, we approve it, but I, I think it needs to go through the variance process.
I do have one other portion of the code that kind of allows us to do modifications and it's eighteen sixty and point three zero zero. Commission may modify, the planning commission may by resolution establish a standard, or establish a standard practices for which to determine an appropriate and practical modifications required for the front side and rear depths and widths of all zones if it's called, it says geometrically, geometrically shaped or dimensions of topography, making it impractical to literally apply, to literally apply the yard requirements in this title. So it, but it also takes, like I said, a resolution. So I don't know if, would we do a resolution as a P and Z or would have?
No, we would, we would, we would do a resolution.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not, or postpone this part of be able to figure out, you know, what it's through the resolution so we can, not just him, and obviously we're not pleasing one person. We're, we're, again, it's always about, you know, we're amending our code on a case by case as we're finding these things out that need these changes throughout case to case to case. So I don't want to make sure it's not a particular applicant that we're pleading. It's these cases as they come, we're starting noticing things in our code that needs to be approved or improved in essence. But however, the commission.
Yeah, and I
Keep in mind, you know, this is a recommend, a proof to recommend, right? Still needs to go to the board of trustees and they would need a very good reason if, if it is approved, why that was so.
It's, it's, it's here. I mean, but, so I think what you said, Mr. Salazar, is we can have a condition to approve the wall.
And the back porch?
And the back porch. postpone that portion of it until we can get a resolution.
Correct.
Makes sense to you? Okay. Yeah, exactly, exactly.
It, it's just getting the, you know, I started to decrease, I mean, the T's crossed. I mean, that's pretty much what.
Do you have a time, or a guess of the timeline delay this would cause?
A time limit to what?
Time delay, how long this whole process?
Yeah, I, I think a resolution is not like a hearing. A resolution is, is just a matter of bringing it up, presenting it to the, on the next meeting and then going forward on that. I would have to double check again just to make sure. But a resolution is not like changing the code where it takes the whole thirty days or whatnot. This is a resolution on certain particular things that we find. Once the resolution is in and then next time we do any amendments for any kind of hearing on the code, we will include that in there to reflect that.
Any other questions? I think we're ready for a vote.
Okay, so the, 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 the Correct.
Oh, oh.
Okay, so I would like to amend the
The original motion?
The motion, thank you. I'd like to amend the motion or the condition stating that we're, I would like to approve the fence and the back porch and postpone the front porch.
Postpone the front porch until a further date until we can, okay.
Second.
You have a second with that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, second.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Okay.
Yes.
All right, no, but we're discussing, I'll go ahead and take the vote. Commissioner Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Chair Walker Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Alvar? And Commissioner Mobile Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Again, just for the applicants, this is going to be heard again for final approval with the board trustees on upcoming Monday.
Okay, that's oh, the next item is number seven. It's a discussion, only a discussion about the certified local government presentation by our historic preservation specialist.
Good evening, commissioners. So I'm sure you've received the packet and I'll be honest, what I kind of put together there were just a lot of the acts that really go through the, the process in detail and what is required to achieve that certified local government. I think a few weeks ago, maybe about two weeks ago, we had the discussion, kind of an introductory discussion on what to, what a certified local government is. And I just want to barely scrape the surface and then we'll go, we'll have a subsequent meetings that will go into a little bit more detail about funding, about grants and national register. But this one in particular, I'd like to give some general information on how to achieve this certification and maybe just take a brief look on how maybe we can amend our ordinance and create resolutions to do so. So if you have any questions, just if you don't mind kind of holding off till afterwards, but you might receive an answer within my, my presentation throughout. And just, yeah, like I was saying, a brief recap, you know, the certified local government is just kind of an offshoot of the nineteen sixty six Historic Preservation Act. And in nineteen eighty, they decided what, what better way can local governments and the community be involved in a national and historic preservation and our, of the national historic preservation overall and the National Park Service. So right now, there's nine certified local governments in New Mexico, two thousand throughout the, throughout the United States. So just noteworthy. But as we were discussing the benefits, of course, the main benefits we're looking at are the funding. Yeah, we want some money. We want somebody to help us repair these historic buildings. And there's a lot of requests for that from the permits we're getting from people, you know, and clients that are, or residents that are coming into the office to say, how can we help on that? But secondly, we also have, it's a means of actually effectively preserving our historic properties with assistance from the Historic Preservation Department along with all those partnerships with the historic, National Park Service. It's also a great way to get the community involved and understanding what preservation means at the local level, creating awareness for that locally. So it's really besides, besides the funding, that's another fantastic thing. It's also, we are able, CLG is one certified, we're able to apply annually for matching grants for, from, solely for certified local governments. We also have as, for as CLG, we would have the capability to have a formal role in the national register of the historic, historic places nomination process. We'll also have the, CLGs are also encouraged to liaise with other departments in the local government and organizations. And additionally, we'll also receive support, support from Historic Preservation Department and just how we can go about, about better prisoner buildings, buildings and further kind of education on that. So what I wanted to kind of go through initially was that there's a checklist I kind of gave you attached and I think that'll be a good kind of jumping point to see what we're missing and where we're at right now. And so it's, if you don't, it's going to be this, this one right here, that checklist. And I'll just go through this checklist so that we can see where we are. And this is provided by the historic preservation division so that what better way to kind of get started. So the, the number one, it says applicant must meet, applicant meets the federal definition of local government and has the authority to enforce acceptable legislation for the designation and protection of historic properties. So we have already kind of incorporated that into our code, which is a great, a great start. And we have, as, as we've seen, that whole eighteen thirty three really goes in detail on how we can help to protect and enforce this legislation. can help to protect and enforce this legislation. Our, number two, the applicant has established a Historic Preservation Review Commission consisting of five members is the minimum, but we have also our alternates, which would be two. And then you say then there's, you see some, after that, there's, there are X amount of laymate, lay members and there are X amount of professional members. So we'll see later that the professional members have to hold specific qualifications, but the lay members are majority of, you know, so we have seven, seven lay members and the follow-up will have, we do have two, there is a required for two professional members, but that will come subsequently. Then we'll see the, number three is all commission members have a demonstrated positive interest, competence or knowledge in historic preservation. And that, you know, they'll look at resumes, everybody's resume would be, would be kind of demonstrated to the historic public, Historic Preservation Division and then they'll just see, but following that, professional members of the commission have been appointed to the extent available in the community and we have reviewed resumes and documents, professional qualifications acceptable under the Secretary of Interior Historic Preservation Professional Qualification Standards. If you'd like a little bit more detail, that's also in the, in the acts that I've given you, but we will go over that following what those expertise kind of qualifications are. The role and responsibilities of the local government has been specific in detail in the enclosed agreement, including the four basic responsibilities, which are enforcing state or local legislation for the designation and protection of historic resources, maintaining a system for survey and inventory of historic properties, providing for adequate public participation in the historic preservation program, reviewing national register nominations through a qualified local commission. And then B, required of all CGs is that we, they maintain adequate financial systems, adhere to the requirements of the historic preservation funds, adhere to the requirements mandated by Congress to the use of those funds, adhere to the requirements outlined in the state of the New Mexico Local Government Participation Procedures. And that's just, that is just really including the reporting in meetings and, and future trainings that are required of, of the HPD. A lot of acronyms in here, so if you, if you're lost in one, please let me know. Okay, so following that, I wanted to offer you one more piece. I thought this made this into the packet, but this is a great way to kind of get this out here. You want to make, let me just see if they can. So to simplify things, I made a little, just a little cheat sheet for you here so we can kind of work down these and to see where we're at with the CLG and a few definitions and just some further comprehension that, does everybody, did everybody receive one? Yeah, everybody, there's enough for, okay, perfect, okay, perfect. No, no, no worries. Okay, so the first thing I really wanted to touch upon were the, are the landmark designation types. I'm just going to briefly, and then we can, we can discuss that, is that there's a local designation type and that's, there, it's a community, so I'll go, the local designation type is for us to have a local register and a local set of designation. And it is required to be CLG, says yes, we must have a process for designation and criteria for local landmarks outlined in our ordinance. And then there's the National Register of Historic Places and the State Register of Cultural Properties or National Historic Landmark. One thing to note is a lot, and I was trying to overview and see if this was, it was available to us, is that we, we currently do not have a local designation. Our, our buildings, our historic buildings are based off of the National Register. So you'll find, it was very, you know, you would think that a National Register has more power, but it's actually the contrary because we are able to, through our local designation, we're able to have more power. I mean, we are, we're kind of already protecting these historical buildings, we're acting as is, as it is already a local designated designation for the Town of Messia, but in fact, we're just using our National Register as a kind of base for that. So this is, this is kind of stood out to me because we, it is, it is dictated through the National Preservation Department that we, as a commission, have kind of no say over the National Register landmarks. So in order to move forward, this was probably the first thing that I think is of high importance is to create our own local designated landmark. So, and that would mean that to kind of review these buildings in the same sense, just kind of create this by list. We can also create our own local district, but that would also require having to do some further kind of a designation and local reports for that. That's something to note there here, let me just see if there's anything. And I'll just read what I wrote here, says while listing a property in the National Register of Historic Places and/or the State Register, it may inform a local preservation program. Listing, however, does not provide protection. Local governments cannot impose design on a National Register only listed property. For a review to occur, local governments must designate properties via the local, via the local designation process and criteria in its preservation ordinance. Establishing, establishing a significant and effective local register depends both on clear documentation about what is being designated and why. Local governments interested in protecting properties listed in the National Register must do so by designating those properties under their local preservation ordinance first. So to follow, then we have the National Register under that second landmark designation types. It's, I'm just going to read under that recommended area, says informal monitoring of the National Register or State Registered Properties. Design review should only recur if property has been designated by local ordinance. Review under section 106 with federal agency supported work. And federal, I'll tell you, section 106 is just kind of, when a federal agency wants to come in to the town and make changes to our historic town, that is when we, when it's registered under the National Historic Place that we can have a little more flexibility with that and speak about that. And just to go down to that second kind of box here, says as an aspect to develop a survey and inventory program. And that is required to be a CLG. A section should be included in the ordinance outlining the survey program. We need to establish a program to periodically update existing surveys or complete a resurvey. And at this point of the last survey that is done on our properties is probably 1980s. It's historic, correct, yeah. The method of, so yes, so that is something we definitely need to incorporate for many reasons. It, it, any, as I'm listening to Mr., you know, Karotes, that's something that, you know, if this follows through, we have to notate a porch is placed in because we also don't want that to be known as a historic, as a historic kind of attribute to the building as well. So it's something that we need to really look up. An official survey, you know, the National Historic Preservation Division, they work with NMCRS, which is the New Mexico Cultural Resource Information System. That's a little bit more, you know, a lot of the archaeology, archaeologists will use that system. It's also a great way to register some cultural properties for undertaking our local, our local kind of designation. I would recommend using the, it's called an HCPI survey, which is a historic cultural property information report. And I mean, if you'd like to see, I do have some additional copies. I didn't, I tried to conserve some paper and this wasn't up high, but if you want to take a look, I'll just kind of, so you can get an idea of what this looks like. All right, so yes, establishing the survey and the inventory is detrimental to this whole certified local government program. We can ultimately, through the permission of the Historic Preservation Division, we can acquire an NMCRS account. It's going to take a few, but I would say to establish these historical properties through the, these forms initially would be best. By the way, we have a platform and then we can easily kind of ease our way into this NMCRS. And following that, want to maintain a detailed inventory of the historic building sites, structures and objects, including those that have been designated. And as we're just discussing now, there should be a building by building survey and it is essential to supporting the certified local governments. And just to, following up with that, the survey and the inventory materials, it should be, shall be maintained and accessible to the public. So we're, Eddie and I, we're looking at a way to kind of put this on our website. You know, we're also saying, we have so many documents everywhere, just kind of to compile it and we, there's, that NMCRS would be a great resource to us, but in the meantime, we'll also, but we also want to share this information and as I was saying, we want to get some community input and get people excited at a local level about preservation. So why not putting, put it on our website where people can access maybe sometimes historic photos, what has happened to this building, what the just overall survey, survey and information is. All right, so, and then we're going to jump to where this says to quick view local legislation from that where? And the review or of improvements or demolition of locally designated resources. And this is pertaining to our commission that's here before us. And the community can choose whether review is binding or advisory ordinance. And if you're, you're not aware of what binding means, we, we hold a binding ordinance, which the commission has the final say, well, has the say followed by the, the Board of Trustees. So otherwise, an advisory is exactly what that means. It's just as an advice of what should happen there. And just to review of improvements or demolition on National Register or State Registered listed properties, no, that's not required and not legally binding through the commission. That's other, now it's at the State Register level, so that's a little bit more involved here. And this was an interesting one, consent for the designation of local landmarks. Communities can decide whether they require consent. And just so that you're informed, there was a little, it was a little contradictory in some of the parts that I read, but ultimately in, in New Mexico, in the state of New Mexico, owner consent is not required for local designation. So it's owner consent, the local commissions may decide if owner consent on individually listed buildings are required or not. The commission is able to do that, but overall throughout the state, owner consent is not, is not required. There is no state of New Mexico or federal law requiring owner consent for local, local, and this is in particular for local landmark designation. Once it moves to National Register, owner consent is, is required. Says the strongest type of preservation ordinance is one where the owner consent is not, not required. Historic Preservation Division recognizes that this, this decision should be determined at the local level. For historic districts, Historic Preservation Division recommends that the CLGs consider setting a percentage threshold for owner objection. And that would be kind of a collective pool of all the owners within that district and 51% would say, you know, whether it's owner consent is required or not. It's almost like a vote. And this is a recommendation, once again. All right. And I'm just, since we kind of touched upon that, I'm going to move down to that second of where the logist is. Adoption of the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines for Archaeology and Historic Preservation, which is one of another aspect of the legislation. And we already, we do incorporate that in our code, which is just great. So that's, it's, it'll help, it'll consider, it'll help us to consider our community specific guidelines, which already does. The appeals of commission decisions for the aspect of legislation, it says, yes, if design review is binding, this is required, ordinance must outline a process. But we do have that, we do allow appeals. And just, let's see, does, commission decisions and writing, you know, we are really checking off a lot of the rest, the rest of these boxes, so that's, that's great. And so now that we've kind of gone through a lot of these and we read like the register, the relationship to our National, National Register is none for the local governments. That is, I just want to kind of accentuate the importance of beginning a local, a local designation that will really help to protect our buildings and our historic. The local governments are discouraged from automatically listing properties into their local register base on National Register designation alone. It was tempting, you know, I was telling Eddie, it's really tempting to say, hey, why don't we just take all those buildings and say, hey, let's put them on our local register? But this is what is cautioning against, so we won't be doing that. So following that, I kind of went through the code and tried to amend or tried to create suggestions where I believe each of those kind of constituents would fall under each, each code in particular. So, I mean, and this is very much open to discussion. Yeah, the blue is my comment and a lot of this is just how my brain, how my brain is processing all of this. The green, okay, you see the green is the act. It's, it's a whole separate, it's the Historic Districts and Landmarks Act that we have mentioned in, in our code. But I think to kind of elaborate on them would be a little bit more wiser because there's a lot, there's a lot in there, there's a lot to process in that code in particular. So I was looking, I was looking at 1806, 020 and that one saying, the Planning and Zoning and Historical Appropriateness Commission shall consist of five members who shall be appointed by the mayor with the consent of Board of Trustees. A member or the Board of Trustees may be appointed as ex officio, non-voting member of the commission. So before I dive into this, I just wanted to, in the previous meeting when we had discussed the CLG, I kind of gave you the list of what was required by the Historic Preservation Division and it was, some of those are also included in here as to what was missing. So we can, we can go over those too if you don't. But I'll go through this. It says here, I said, maybe we need to add member qualifications or that the fact that you have demonstrated positive interest, competence or knowledge in architecture, historical architecture, and these are the specialty requirements that I was discussing previously. Historic architecture, architectural history, archaeology, anthropology, historic preservation, planning, real estate design, building trades, landscape or architecture, conservation, law, finance or related disciplines to the extent that these professionals are available in the community. So to adding that and, you know, in one way or another, and also say of the five members, two professional members should be qualified in the field of historic, history, archaeology, architecture, architectural history, historic architecture, and maybe add a deficient of what my position is because I will qualify as a professional in that field. This was one of the requirements of a CLG, as you'll see through the checklist. So this is what I was addressing here. And in the following, I have the 1806, 070 about meetings, another, this was another requirement, is that the, whoever audited our April 2022 request for the historic, for our certified local government request or kind of do like initial overview of what's missing is, they stated that we did not state, although we meet every first and third Monday, we said out that there was at least a meeting held, but we have to specify that there was at least four meetings held, but I thought 10 would be a nice number. So the Planning and Zoning and Historical Appropriateness Commission shall meet the first and third Monday of each month or on days specified by the Board of Trustees. Regular and special meetings shall be called as required by the Town Code 2.70, 010. And we want to just make sure that it is, it is noted that meetings are held, well, as it says, the first and third, but stating that we meet at least a minimum of 10 times per year. It's just going to help to say, you know, it's always based upon interpretation, it could interpret that we only meet once a year if we kept it as such, although it says first and third. says first and third, but that's. All right. Moving forward to eighteen thirty-three zero seventy, the powers and duties of the PZAC related to historic preservation, conducting and maintaining a survey of historic buildings and area and preparing a plan for their preservation. So we want to make sure that we reflect that we're actually doing survey or accomplishing surveying and with this what the standards for our surveying would be. And I also think, you know, I think this for us now, and I also think about for the future, when people are looking further out into what the what the code and what the the requirements first for surveying are, it's important that we add these little fat or else, you know. And also just to kind of maintain and say what what the frequency for a surveying kind of review would be. So we want to add or reflect, I said, that perhaps an amendment, an appendix or an amendment shall be made for surveying in accordance with the New Mexico four ten ten thirteen, which is the the outline for what the certified local government is. And they mentioned surveying standards, and that was in your packet, that four ten ten. Or just to mention that the survey standard is all means of inventory shall be coordinated with and complementary to the New Mexico Cultural Resource Information System, which is at NEMCRIS, or with the use of historic cultural properties inventory form. And then survey forms are required for each building in our district. These inventories shall be easily integrated into the statewide comprehensive historic preservation planning system and other appropriate planning processes used by the Historic Preservation Division. There should be a cultural properties inventory for the local historic district of the town. All inventory must be maintained and updated periodically to reflect changes, alterations and demolitions. At minimum, this shall include the updating of forms for all major work to significant and contributing cultural properties to the historic district of the town. All inventory material shall be maintained securely and shall be accessible to the public except when confidentiality of the site located is mandated through eighteen sixty six eleven, which is an excavation permit and the Archaeological Resource Protection Act, so and so, so on. Yeah, so just really trying to focus on the details of surveying, frequent updating, and I would like to leave it up to the commission to kind of make a final decision on what the frequent updating time should be, what the timeframe for and for the adjustments to the buildings and so on. Another part of that was recommending to the board of trustees the designation of historic landmarks and historic districts. And that's to, and instead of just saying to the designation of a historic landmark and historic district, should add our locally designated historic properties to that part. That's another thing that was mentioned in that April twenty twenty-two kind of review was that we had, we haven't mentioned at all anything regarding our local designation. So that adding that in would would increase our chances of achieving this certified local government certification. In addition to that, attending educational programs covering the historic preservation duties of the PZAC and current developments in historic preservation. We, and this was a required kind of addendum here is to say that there will be at minimum one regular meeting set aside for informational or educational purposes per year pertaining to the work and the functions of the commission or Historic Preservation Committee. Meeting notifications must be sent to the Historic Preservation Division in a timely manner so that they may attend such meeting and/or provide information. Grant expenditure reports, funds received from all historic preservation and the shall follow fiscal accountability guidelines pursuant to the grants manual. We'll discuss the grants manual in our in our subsequent meeting. Here we have the eighteen oh six point zero nine zero procedural rules. The planning, zoning and historical appropriate commission shall adopt regulations for the transaction of business and keep a public record of its transactions, finding resolutions, determinations and attendance of its members at its meeting. And I thought maybe, you know, we can actually add also that another requirement was that an annual report of the PZAC commission shall be reported to the ship is the state historic preservation officer. And inclusive in this report, this would be a number of cases that review we've reviewed on our locally designated properties, new designations made locally. And we can also eventually make historic designations for the National Historic Register, revised resumes of commission members, appointments to the commission, attendance records, all minutes related to the national register nominations and goals and objectives of the commission for the coming year. The report shall also document the educational meetings which commission members attended. The report shall be due within sixty calendar days or at the end of each fiscal year. And this is to ensure that we will be able to continue that certification. And like as Commissioner Miller was just stating, what's the green? And it's in relation to this eighteen point thirty-three point zero thirty is the authority. The designation of the town's historic zone is made pursuant to the Historic Districts and Landmarks Act, which is our sections three twenty-two, one through three twenty-two, five, and I miss a nineteen seventy-eight. And we, as this is, I had mentioned, these are already in our code, but I would like to go through them because it it they're very fascinating, but also it's what CLG stands behind. The three twenty-two, one just basically discusses what CLG is and how it's how we are mandated, a CLG is mandated to follow the the subsequent acts. So three twenty-two, two, the purpose is the legislature, the legislature of the state of New Mexico hereby declares that the historic heritage of this state is among its most valued and important assets, and that it is the intention of the Historic District and Landmark Act to empower the counties and municipalities of this state with as full and complete powers to preserve, protect and enhance the historic areas and landmarks lying within their respective jurisdictions as it is possible for this legislature legislature to permit under the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New Mexico and subject to the specific duties and responsibilities respecting historical matters already granted or to be granted under other statutes of this state. Thirty-two, thirty, twenty-two, three states and establishment of historic districts and landmarks by zoning. Any county or municipality otherwise empowered by law to adopt and enforce zoning ordinances, rules and regulations is hereby empowered to create as part of the building and zoning regulations and restrictions adopted by it in the manner otherwise provided by law and in accordance with a comprehensive zoning plan, a zoning district designation, certain areas as historical areas and landmarks and may, for the purpose of preserving, protecting and enhancing such historical areas and landmarks, adopt and enforce regulations and restrictions within such district relating to the erection, alteration and destruction of those exterior features of buildings and other structures. Subject to public view from any public street, way or other public place. Twenty-two, four states historic areas and landmarks, authorization to expend funds to enter into agreements and where necessary, exercise power of eminent domain. Any county or municipality is hereby empowered to expend public funds for any purposes connected with the preservation, protection or enhancement of historical areas and landmarks, areas related to historical areas or areas otherwise of special architectural or visual interest, including but not limited to the purchase of any or all of such areas or landmarks, if necessary, through the use of eminent domain in the manner provided by law for the acquisition of property for a public purpose, which acquisition is hereby declared to be, A, the leasing or acquisition of any other title or interest in the same by negotiation, or if necessary, through the use of eminent domain in the manner provided by law, including the acquisition of easements in and related to such areas and landmarks, which will permit the county or municipality to control development of the same in a manner consistent with the purpose of the Historical District and Landmark Act. B, the entering into any reasonable agreement with private persons to promote the objectives of this section, or C, the enactment of appropriate ordinances or resolutions under which the county or municipality, as the case may be, may be given prior right to acquire any interest in property in such areas as landmarks as over any private person offering an equal price for the same interests or any other similar measures as may be consistent with the purposes of the Historic District and Landmark Act. Then finally, thirty twenty-two, five, says the Historic Areas and Landmarks Act, constructed the construction of this act is that nothing in this in the Historic District and Landmark Act shall be construed to limit any existing inherent statutory or other powers under which any county or municipality has enacted appropriate measures regarding historic areas and landmarks. So that's pretty much just wanted to give you, I'm going to stop there because that was a lot. It's a mouthful and a lot to absorb. It's a lot to absorb. And I was saying, in addition to those, the acts themselves, they give a great, a great amount of detail further of what the CLG is, but we'll cover some other ground in in future meetings. Are there any questions? Yeah.
Well, let me have it. So local is local here. It's not local, state local. And then there's the national.
Yes.
So how's the local here relate to the state?
So we don't have a local designation.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, and that's, but but we we want to, yes. And so a kind of preemptive, we would have to go about nominating these, the the projects, nominating these buildings, nominating these areas almost one by one, if we want to do that. We can do it as a district, but a level of reports are still will still be necessary. And that will include surveying. And the nomination can be really from anyone if through in the town of Nocia. It will be bought, it will be kind of presented to the planning and zoning commission if it's something that, you know, the one that's already not on our register, something that's on our, but we're starting from ground zero, really, and we're building up this local register that we have to present our local designated register to to the, yeah, to the Historic Preservation Division when we present or when we're seeking to achieve that certified local government certification. So I was kind of, what I'm working with now is a kind of draft on how we can locally designate some nominations for the town. And it's it's very brief, like I said, it's it's not going to be a thirty-page report because anybody within the, any of the residents can nominate historic historic building or any nominations. I mean, this is a really rough, it's a really rough draft of what. And I just use a little more.
Which row, Lee?
When we voted on the torches, now some of the. Because it does, that just has so much great, um, stories.
Nice job, too.
So this is what I'm I'm looking to kind of designate or designate for our designation as just a preliminary nomination form. And these just giving a basic detail of why this building is important, why do you feel? And the main, and we want to say important, but the main two words that in historic preservation are significance and integrity. We want to make sure that this building in fact has significance that, and the significance, briefly, I can upgrade this so you can get a little idea of. What? Let me find this here. Right. So and that would fall under significance is like our the criteria for the evaluation of what what makes it, what makes this building so important? And this is.
Versus contributing.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, right, yeah. And then these, what what makes it for the criteria for evaluation is that we want to look at properties that are associated with events that have been made, had that have made a significant contribution to the patterns of our history. They're associated with the lives of a person significant in our past, or that embodies a distinctive characteristic of a type of period or method of construction or represent the work of a master that possess high artistic value, or that present a significant and distinguishable entity whose components may lack individual distinction, or that have yielded or may be likely to yield information important to history or prehistory. So those are key components. Additionally, religious properties and and cemeteries that are also or birthplaces of of graves, you know, those are also considered significant for different. And then also significance is, you know, anything within the past fifty years, if it is of exceptional importance. So that's just kind of a groundwork for some historical, the significance of the properties. So keep in mind, when we're receiving these nominations, you want to see a level of of significance and integrity. Absolutely.
History is.
Yeah.
How are we going to follow up to decide, oh, yeah, this is going to be, this is it. This is true.
This is good stuff. Yes. So if you go to the last page, actually, I didn't do it because I was just trying to print out the for your review, is there is a resources in kind of, what's it saying? I think it's just, what is it? Of the the more recent, the application, the nomination registration form. There's the last page where it says resources and I'm sorry. Yeah, we want to make sure that all documentation, resources are all there. And I love researching. So I would be happy to fact check, yes. And but that is what I'll be doing. I mean, I personally am looking at a number of historic buildings that I would like to present first, but also working with whatever buildings that we're currently receiving permits for, as for example, Mr. Karodi's home, you know, and we had another, other La Poza, you know, that's a huge one. It's kind of written out for me already, but but those, yes. Yes. Yes, yes, yes. And and to make that, I would love to have the, we already have our plaza as a national historic registry landmark. It would be great to also do that as our locally registered landmark, and but that will require a set of reports again. I mean, I can use what we have, but it's also, we want to take into consideration that it's been, it's historic itself, as 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 Commissioner Wackenstraw said, we want to make sure that any updated work has been also added into that report. We don't want, I think it's important just to document a lot of that.
Good. I'm sure we have a lot of other questions, but when are we going to have another session? There's just a work session with with you.
It all depends on the cases that they come up. We're trying, we're trying to do it consecutively.
That makes sense.
Other, so we don't forget.
That makes sense.
Depending on, you know, how many cases we have for our next meeting, do we have another work session, do we have a hearing?
It'd be nice if we had a work session. We have to plan when we didn't.
And that was the intent, but because we had the training today, you know, I mean, they have another, our next meeting, there's going to be another hearing. You know, I mean, so it's like to try to get these work sessions in, it's it's almost impossible. So that's why we only have one business application to review for the board of the commission. I'm like, this is perfect time. I'm like, this is a perfect time to do a discussion, to kind of fill that void, you know what I mean? So, but we had a couple other ones drop in at the last minute, but, yeah. It is a lot of stuff, and it just opens up to your eyes a lot of work that needs to get done. But at the same time, it's exciting. I think it's exciting because it's going to make Nocia better, it's going to help people here in Nocia, everybody is. And you can't get grants from the state funding unless you're part of the local registry. So we got to get them on board first.
First things first.
Yeah, but we'll try to have it on the next one, probably, hopefully, and as a work session. I'm trying not to call you guys in for work sessions on not scheduled meetings, you know? I do appreciate you all's, you know, time that you put into this, but, yeah. So depending on, depending on what we have for next week.
And please, if anything, any questions come up or anything you, we would like to discuss, you know where my office is, but also I share Eddie's old email, if you don't know, it's the comdev. Please, please feel free to email any thoughts or ideas you have, or if you want any clarification on anything. And, but yes, subsequently, we'll be discussing the grants. There's a whole grants manual, so you think that, this was something. There's a whole other manual to discuss. And then just about the general federal.
This is just the surface.
Scratching.
Scratch, scratch, yeah.
It would seem like, you know, we're going up to training this, tomorrow. And are you going to that?
Yes.
Yeah, so it would seem like, I'm trying to remember the agenda, but it would seem like that would be a perfect agenda item at some point in some of that training. Because, you know, there's, how many districts did you say is in the state twenty?
Right, right now, as far as CLG? Oh, nine, there's only nine.
It'd be nice to learn from them.
Yes. Yes, and Alex sent to you, and Mike Taylor, they invited me to, there's a National Historic Preservation Conference that's happening in October. And it's in Las Vegas, yes, you know about it, yes. And it's the first, it was, it had been postponed for years, years on end, and they're finally holding it again. And I also hear that Las Vegas has some amazing, you know, properties as well. I've only been to this.
And that's Las Vegas, New Mexico.
New Mexico, please, don't get it confused with Nevada. But thank you, thank you so very much. Thank, any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Yes, thank you.
So, thank you. And now it's time for Commissioner and staff comments.
I have a question. Um, Mr. Salazar, I'm a little confused because at one point you had said that the chair would not vote unless there was a tie. And then today, we.
You know, you're absolutely right, that wasn't, yeah, that's, it's actually, it was, it was approved by this commission, and it went to the Board of Trustees. The mayor, mayor and I today were looking for the actual resolution that the Board of Trustees, and because we're having a lot of meetings, all these amendments, we couldn't remember, or he couldn't remember, and I couldn't remember, if they actually had already gone through the Board of Trustees for, and approved. Do you guys remember if it has or hasn't?
No. What I asked the same question to the, after the meeting we had at five o'clock, to the mayor, and I said, you know, I thought I wasn't supposed to vote. I was just to vote if it's a tie. And he said, that hasn't been finalized.
Exactly.
So he says.
And that is, I guess that's what I'm getting, is it's worth, it hasn't been finalized, it has to get approved, the resolution's got to pass and stamped and all that. But, yeah, you're absolutely right, that's.
He always sits at the end in the Board of Trustees, you know?
See what the vote, how the vote comes in.
Yeah, I, I thought he did, but we were just trying to find that resolution. And this, be error on the safe side, then, you know, to not. Any other questions?
Did you have any other?
Yeah, the only thing, I, we are, you know, we are going tomorrow, right? We're going to Taos, right? Don't go anywhere else, we're going to Taos, New Mexico. And I do have a meeting tomorrow, though, at ten o'clock in the morning. Okay, so as soon as the meeting is done, it's, it's, it's a meeting, virtual meeting. And as soon as I'm done, I'll be heading down that way. All the rooms and the registration's all done. I'd have to speak with Gloria in the morning, at three, and then, and then with Silvana and myself. I speak with Gloria in the morning, but I believe I have to be there to sign something or, because I, I reserved all you guys' room. So it looks like if I leave right at eleven, I'll probably be there around between five-thirty and six o'clock. So just give, you know. What's that?
We shouldn't get that before you do.
Well, unless you want to go have dinner or do something, I guess is what I'm saying. Yeah, exactly. So, so I guess that's kind of a little concerning for me. I didn't realize the meeting I had, I committed to, but, yeah. Go have dinner or sightseeing, whatever, and I'll try to get there as soon as possible. If any, all of you have my phone number, if you have any questions or concern where you at, you know? Holler, call me, or whatever. It's, yeah, my work and my, well, not my person not on there, but you, some of you all know that as well. But, yeah, my, my business phone is on there. Either that or email me, you know where I'm at. But, yeah, I'll try to get there, like I said, it's five and a half hour drive, I think, five and a half, six hours. Yeah, and the meeting's over at eleven, you know, so I'll try to be there by five o'clock, five-thirty. Any other?
We just need to keep our receipts for food and gas, right?
Yes. Now, we'll, we'll go over the process part of that, so everybody's kind of familiar with that. Once again, because they keep changing the process. And also with the meals, if the meals are offered there, like for lunch at the conference, then, you know, that's part of your, for DM. If it's not, if it's not, then obviously they give you money to go eat. I think it's like five dollars or something like that. Like a happy meal, you know? I don't know, I think it was thirty-five, but I don't remember exactly. But anyway, again, if you guys got any questions between now and then, give me a holler, looking forward to going, and I'll view there going. So I.
Misses, have any more comments?
Okay, so I need a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn PZHAC meeting for Monday, May the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
All right, first motion by Commissioner Gallegos, second by Commissioner Mova Hill. Commissioner Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Chair Walkinshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Mova Hill?
Yes.
And Commissioner Alia? Let us go home. Thank you all.
That's good.